Good evening, everyone, and welcome to the September 29th meeting of the Glendale City Council. Mr. City Clerk, may we have the roll call?
Councilmembers Draymond.
Here.
Najarian.
Here.
Mayor Quintero. Councilmember Weaver.
Here.
Mayor Protam Friedman.
Here. Tonight's flag salute is going to be by the Boy Scouts Troop Number Eight from North Star District, and the invocation will be by Rabbi Shemka Bachman, co-director of Shabbat, Jewish Center of Glendale and Foothill Communities. So if the Boy Scouts will please come up to the podium and lead us in our flag salute.
Please place your right hand over your heart.
Aye.
And join me in the Pledge of Allegiance.
The Pledge of Allegiance to the Flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Please remain standing for the invocation.
Almighty God, we stand before you in prayer. Look favorably upon the mayor and honorable members of the City Council of our great city of Glendale. We beseech you, Almighty and merciful God, to extend your grace to each and every member of this august body, and bestow upon them the joy of life, good health, and prosperity. Bless these distinguished individuals who have been chosen to make laws and decisions for the citizens of our city. Grant these public servants wisdom and understanding in their noble pursuit of justice and equality. Give them guidance so that they will always be conscious of your presence and will strive to enact laws with honesty and integrity in accordance with your will. May they have the wisdom to turn adversity into opportunity and to transform the hard challenges we face today into the seeds from which we'll sprout the growth of tomorrow. May our city serve as a beacon of light for people of all faiths and walks of life. May Glendale help achieve the goal so powerfully stated in our Pledge of Allegiance so that America is truly one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Amen.
Mr. City Clerk, can we have your report, please?
Certainly. The agenda for the September 29, 2009, regular meeting of the Glendale City Council is posted on Thursday, September 24, 2009, on the bulletin board outside City Hall.
Thank you. What's next, please?
Next is at Presentation and Appointments, 3A, which is Agenda Preview for the Meeting of October 6, 2009.
And for that, we will go to Mr.--
We'll go to Bob McFaul, recently returned from vacation. Welcome back, Bob.
Thank you. Thank you very much. For next Tuesday, October 6, the Housing Authority, there's no specific action items, but the Redevelopment Agency at 2:30 does have an item on it. It'll be the Director of Development Services regarding the Professional Services Agreement Change Order in connection with various projects in the central Glendale and San Fernando Road quarter redevelopment project areas. For the Glendale City Council that evening at 6 o'clock, there's a number of items. The first action item is a report from the Acting Chief of Police regarding a discussion of the police department's implementation of an area command service delivery model. Next, the Acting Director of Community Development and Housing, and the Director of Information Services, and also the Directors of Planning, the Fire Chief, and the Director of Public Works have a joint recommendation regarding the purchase of consultation services relative to the City Services Interface Program, known as the CSI Project. And then lastly, the City Manager will be presenting a report on the Montrose Chamber Special Event Appeal.
Thank you.
Next week.
Thank you. Mr. City Clerk, what is next?
Next, under Presentation and Appointments, is 3B, Proclamation Designating September 2009 as Life Insurance Awareness Month.
Thank you. And Councilmember Najarian will be presenting this proclamation to Ara Aharonian on behalf of NIFA of Pasadena. And the proclamation reads, "Whereas nearly 50 million Americans say they lack the life insurance coverage needed to ensure a secure financial future for their loved ones, and whereas life insurance provides a financial security for families in the event of a premature death by helping surviving family members meet immediate and long-term financial obligations and objectives, and whereas recent studies have found that when a premature death occurs, insufficient life insurance coverage results in three-fourths of surviving family members having to take measures such as working additional jobs or longer hours, borrowing money, withdrawing money from savings and investment accounts, and in many cases, moving to a smaller home. And whereas the goal of Life Insurance Awareness Month is to make consumers more aware of their life insurance needs and encourage them to seek professional advice." Now, therefore I, Frank Quintero, Mayor of the City of Glendale, hereby proclaim the month of September 2009 as Life Insurance Awareness Month.
Congratulations, Mr. Aharonian.
Thank you.
You can answer if you will.
Of course. Honorable Mayor Protam and members of the City Council and staff, it's an honor for me to be here again because beginning of the month, as Ms. Friedman said, it was Life Insurance Awareness Month, the month of September, and every year we were standing here, last year also. And beginning of the month, we were in Orlando, Florida, with 1,960 delegates all over the nation because it was month awareness for the life insurance. And I have just a paragraph to introduce to you what is the awareness that we stand for. This month, we celebrate life as the National Association of Financial Advisors, which means NIFA, comprises more than 700 state and local associations representing over 200,000 agents and their associate nationwide. In our great state of California, over 500 agents serve their clients by providing life insurance and annuities, health insurance and employee benefits, multi-line policies, and financial advising and investments. I have learned that when a premature death occurs, insufficient life insurance results in 75 percent of surviving family members having to work additional jobs or longer hours, borrow money, withdraw money from savings and investment accounts, and, in too many cases, move to smaller, less expensive housing. Just to make ends meet, I am always saddened to hear about these tragedies that could have been avoided if they had taken the time to sit down with a financial advisor and plan for their unique goals and objective. Thank you very much for the time, and thank you for this proclamation.
Our next proclamation is going to be awarded to Fire Chief Harold Hoggins for Fire Prevention Week. And Councilman Draymond, would you please read the proclamation?
I would be very happy to. Actually, why don't I go down there and do it?
Okay.
Let me read the mayor's proclamation. It says, "Whereas the City of Glendale is committed to ensuring the safety and security of all those living in and visiting our city, and whereas more than 200,000 individuals are seen in the nation's emergency rooms for burn injuries, and whereas cooking is the leading cause of home fires and home fire injuries while heating equipment and smoking are the leading cause of home fire deaths, and whereas Glendale first responders are dedicated to reducing the occurrence of home fires and home fire injuries through prevention and protection education, and whereas residents who have planned and practiced a home fire escape plan are more prepared and will therefore be more likely to survive a fire, and whereas the 2009 Fire Prevention Week theme, Stay Fire Smart, Don't Get Burned, effectively serves to remind us all of the simple actions we can take to stay safer from fire during Fire Prevention Week and year round. Now, therefore, Mayor Frank Quintero of the City of Glendale proclaims the week of October 4 through 10, 2009, as Fire Prevention Week. And it makes me very proud to present this to you, Chief.
Thank you.
And I want to thank you both, and it's very timely considering what this community has come through with the fires. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
We'll have to autograph a copy and send it to the mayor.
Absolutely. (Laughter) [applause] Mayor Protam, council, staff, and public, my name is Greg Gottfried. I'm the EMS Battalion Chief for the Glendale Fire Department, and I'm happy to be here to accept this proclamation in honor or in recognition of Fire Prevention Week. Again, Fire Prevention Week is October 4 through the 10 of this year. Let me just bring a couple statistics to you from 2008 and why fire prevention is extremely important to us as a community and to us as a society. In 2008, there were over 25 million calls to the fire department for services that were requested, whether they were fire or EMS-related or just general service-type calls, 25 million in the United States. Of that 25 million, 1.5 million were fires in the United States. Of those 1.5 million fires, we lost 3,320 civilians this last year due to fires. So it is obviously something that we, as a community and as a society, need to be aware of. There were approximately $15 million in property loss in 2008 in the United States. 1.5 million of that was directly related to brush fires here in the state of California. So, and we just recently, obviously, went through and experienced the station fire here in our community. So fire prevention is something that is, that we believe strongly in, so there's some things that we specifically talk about, stop, drop, and roll. It's not just for kids. It's something we teach in the schools, but that's something that everybody should be aware of. If you have any need where you catch on fire, you obviously want to stop, drop, and roll. Smoke detectors in the home, extremely important. They save lives. Every day they do. You need to have smoke detectors in your homes. Extinguishers. Should have extinguishers. Home exit drills. This next week, we'll be going to all the schools here and doing school drills with the kids, teaching them and showing them how to evacuate out of their classrooms and making sure that their alarm systems and all that stuff work. But I want to thank you again for this proclamation recognizing Fire Prevention Week. Thank you.
Thank you. What's next, Mr. City Clerk?
Item four is City Council and Staff Comments.
Mr. Weaver.
Yeah, well, a little interesting story I'd like to share with my colleagues. Saturday, I was sitting at home watching my team, US, it's too noisy. It said the flight crew was too busy and couldn't be bothered. Signed, Your friend Barry Allen. I didn't know Barry Allen was my friend, but, you know, I got on Google and the phone number that was on my cellphone, I searched it back. It was Barry Allen's landline. Now, how could the guy in the plane be calling me on Barry Allen's landline here in Glendale? I don't know the answer. I thought it was, maybe it was just a little amusement for Barry and his friend John Kraft. In research, though, Kraft owns the New England Patriots, and I don't think that's him. There is a Kraft in South Pasadena, maybe a distant cousin or something, but he sure isn't running Kraft Industries. So I just thought I'd share because that was a new one on me to have something like that happen. I don't know what the purpose was. But the game wasn't that hot either, so that's the way it is.
Are you sure the word, Mr. Weaver, was Kraft that he was saying?
Oh, yes. And I have the email here from Mr. Allen, says cheese magnet, John Kraft. So go figure. If it is the New England Patriots owner, I'd like to meet him. But they're based in Chicago, not South Pasadena. See, I knew I'd get a chuckle out of you on that one. Thank you very much.
Follow that.
Mine is more mundane. I just want to announce to my colleagues and to the public that I will not be attending next week's meeting. I will be addressing the American Public Transportation Association Annual Meeting. So I know you'll miss me, but I'll be thinking of you.
Thank you. Mr. Draymond.
I have nothing to report, Chief.
Okay. Mr. Kusakian.
Yes, Madam Mayor Protam, and council and city staff, we have an announcement on behalf of the City Clerk's office and some of our other departments whom we're very happy to work with on this project. But rather than for me to speak, I'd like to introduce to you Steve Rodriguez of my staff, a licensed investigator with my department, and also formerly a state humane officer with the Glendale Humane Society, who will be doing his 19th Vaccination Clinic for the city this year. That's a low-cost vaccination clinic that the City Clerk's office does, but we have some changes to that event this year that we want to make an announcement about and then introduce some friends. So I'd like him to say a few words about the changes and then introduce some members of our city's police department's distinguished K-9 unit.
Thank you, Artie. Honorable Mayor Protam Friedman, council members, and fellow staff, I'm here tonight to let the public know that the City Clerk's Annual Rabies Clinic held in October has changed. Locations from Fire Station 28, New York and Community, and the downtown city parking structure to Verdugo Park. Also, there has been a change in days from a Thursday night to a Saturday day. We are joining the City of Glendale Police K-9 Unit Special Event. You can still receive your pet vaccinations and other services as well. Also new this year, you can obtain pet licenses from the City Clerk's staff. So I hope to see all the loyal pet owners who look forward to our annual vaccination clinic. And now, here's the K-9 Unit to talk a little more about this great and worthwhile event.
Boy, he's anxious to park.
What we're here is to announce our first annual Glendale Canines in the Park to bring in the community fundraiser for our unit via Glendale K-9 Unit, and that is going to be Saturday--
yourselves and your guests.
Oh, my name is Officer Feely. This is my partner, Officer Schultis. And down here, I'm not sure if you see her, Udi. This is Udi. And down below is Sam. As I was saying, we're hosting our first annual fundraiser, Glendale Canines in the Park, Saturday, October 10, from 11:00 a.m. to 4:00 p.m. And it's going to be a fun-filled family event. We're going to have all kinds of dog demonstrations. You could bring your dogs. It's a dog-friendly event, so long as they're on leashes. You could bring your children. We'll have free face painting, free bouncers, free balloons for the kids. We'll have a low-cost pet vaccination if you have dogs with their shots overdue. We'll have a vaccination clinic there. We'll have a pet adoption clinic through the Pasadena Humane Society, live demonstrations with our Glendale Canines, so you could see them do their protection work live, see what their action is all about. And we'll also have other various dog groups performing different agility and obedience demonstrations as well. We'll have live bands. We'll have music there. We'll have barbecue. What else am I missing? There's so many things, so many things to list. Very exciting.
And I think we have a 30-second public service announcement. If GTV6 can run that, if the guys downstairs can hear us.
Come join the Glendale Police K-9 Unit for Glendale Canines in the Park. This free event will be dog-friendly, family-oriented, and fun-filled, featuring live police canine demonstrations, low-cost pet vaccinations, a pet adoption fair, and pet first aid seminars. Enjoy a live band, barbecue, and activities for the kids. You can even enter your dog in the costume and tail wagging talent contest. All proceeds from this event benefit the Glendale Police K-9 Unit. See you there on Saturday, October 10, from 11:00 a.m. to 4:00 p.m. at Verdugo Park. 10, 11:00 a.m. to 4:00 p.m. at Verdugo Park. It's going to be a fantastic day. Bring your children, bring your dogs. We'll have all sorts of events for all the individuals. We'll have raffle prizes, silent auctions. And because it's close to Halloween, we'll have a dog costume contest. So bring your dogs in costume. We'll have an event for that, as well as a tail wagging talent contest.
Great. Sounds like a lot of fun. I will be there.
Fantastic. Hope to see all of you there.
And just so, this will be a reminder to the audience watching at home, we're going to give each of you these little, I guess they're called beanie babies, or German shepherd stuffed animals, to keep at the dais for each of you, so when people are watching your deliberations in this dog-eat-dog environment, I suppose, they'll be reminded of the event coming up.
My granddaughter's going to like that. She'll think it's our dog Sammy.
Awfully dogmatic of the city clerk.
Oh. Oh, yeah. Yeah. Kiana's going to like this. She'll say it's Sammy.
Thank you very much.
Yes.
Mr. City Clerk, what's next on the agenda?
Next is Consent Items. The following are routine and may be acted upon by one motion. Any member of the council or the audience requesting separate consideration may do so by making such requests before a motion is proposed.
And I have a request to pull 5E.
I'll move the rest of the consent calendar.
We have a roll call, please.
Councilmembers Draymond.
Yes.
Najarian.
Yes.
Mayor Quintero. Weaver.
Aye.
Mayor Protam Friedman.
Yes. Would you please read item 5E into the record?
5E is Acting Chief of Police regarding imposition of booking fee on convicted arrestees. At E1 is a resolution authorizing the Acting Chief of Police to implement recovery of fees.
Thank you. And I have one card. Why don't we go to the public first and find out why it was asked to be pulled, and then we'll see if there's a response necessary. I have one card, Mike Molehill.
5E.
Yes.
I'm sorry, I missed-- 8C.
Well, then I'll move 5E.
Okay. Can we have a roll call, please?
Councilmembers Draymond.
Yes.
Najarian.
Yes.
Mayor Quintero. Weaver.
Aye.
Mayor Protam Friedman.
Yes, and you'll need to fill out a separate card, Mr. Molehill, for whatever item you want to speak on. And what's next, Mr. City Clerk?
Okay. Next would be Oral Communications.
Okay. This is the announcement part of Oral Communications. I have three cards. The first is Christine Harmon.
Good evening, council, and everyone else here too. Good evening. I'm Christine Harmon, and I'm here with the Montrose Verdugo City Chamber of Commerce. Number one, by Glendale. Number two, you know I'm here because we're only a few more days until Oktoberfest is here. Four days. It is this Saturday, and so in part of the ramping up for Oktoberfest, it is traditional that we always have a Chamber of Commerce mixer the Wednesday before. That's tomorrow night. And as is the tradition, Citibank on Honolulu will be hosting this mixer, and I want to invite all of you, as well as everyone in Glendale, is welcome to come to this mixer. We will have a little bit of taste of Oktoberfest, if you will. We will have some music, some food, and of course, raffle prizes. And again, it is open to everyone, so please join us. The last-minute details for Oktoberfest are coming together, and the food, rides, games, the great entertainment, like the Cooza with the Cirque du Soleil, they will all be there, and big screen TVs. So UCLA versus Stanford will be shown at 12:30, and USC versus Cal will be shown at 5 o'clock. Now, what came in today is that for Mr. Weaver, we have pulled some strings. I don't know who did. Somebody pulled some strings to make sure that your favorite chair is waiting for you to watch your Trojans fight on.
My favorite chair?
I don't know what they're talking about. Somebody knows you have a favorite chair to watch the Trojans.
It's the mayor's chair, I think.
And I heard, and I did hear a rumor also, that the Mexican restaurants will be ready to feed you additional food if you have any room after all of the German food. Now, also, at 6 o'clock in our schedule, there will be three police people and three fire people, I say people because I don't know their official titles, will be receiving awards. So please come and show your support for these wonderful public servants, if you will. And this was left for--
Is this another setup?
Wow.
I don't, I'm just the messenger. So thank you very much, and I hope to see you all at Oktoberfest. Have a good evening.
Where will I find my favorite chair?
My God, it's a human--
You'll have to go there to see.
It's a human head.
I believe your favorite chair will be by the TV screen to watch your team. Good evening. Thank you.
Thank you. It's always a lot of fun.
Council and viewers, I want to invite everyone to a free preventive care and osteoporosis lecture. It's not as exciting as dogs in Oktoberfest, but it's very, very informative. As a member of the Glendale Commission on the Status of Women, we are cosponsoring this lecture with Verdugo Hills Hospital. It'll be Tuesday, October 6, 6 to 8 p.m. with the doctors Terry and John Osterkamp. They'll be talking about preventative procedures and any questions, information you may be asking about osteoporosis. It'll be free. There'll be prizes. And remember, men can get osteoporosis too. It's not only a woman's condition. So thank you for giving me this opportunity to speak to you. Hope to see you there. And I have these, if anyone would like their own flyer. Thank you very much.
I'm sure that'll be a very valuable event for a lot of people in the community. Casey Lowe. This is the last card I have for the announcement portion.
Good evening, members of the City Council and community leaders in the audience. I'm the field representative from Senator Carol Lou's office. And just a quick update from the senator's office, this Friday is going to be the senator's 10th Annual Women in Business Luncheon. This event is held in collaboration with Assembly Members Paul Kerkorian and Assembly Member Antonovich. It's going to be a wonderful event honoring many powerful and independent women in our community, and we would be delighted if the council would join us. I have a couple of invitations here. The event will be held at the Pasadena Hilton Friday, October 2, from 11:30 in the morning to 1:30 in the afternoon. The cost is $30, and this is an event that's open to the public, so anyone can come. We would love to see you there. And also legislative update, the senator has passed four bills through the legislature, through the state legislature this year, and we are waiting for the governor's signature on October 11 for these bills to be signed into law. So these bills are SB 597, which makes a number of changes. SB 118 directs counties to record when jail inmates have children, which can help reunify families when inmates complete their sentences. SB 315 authorizes school districts to create a walking school bus to increase safety for groups of children walking to and from schools. SB 391 requires the California Department of Transportation to address how the state will reduce greenhouse gas emissions through alternative fuels, new vehicle technology, and increased public transit. So please look forward to further update on the status of these bills. Thank you so much for your time.
Thank you. Mr. City Clerk?
Yes, interject. Somebody's wondering, what I was given was the USC football roster. And I only mention, I hope everybody has heard and has at least said a prayer for Stephon Johnson, who had a freak accident having a 275-pound weight drop on his larynx, crush it, and a normal-sized man would have died. The only thing that saved him is his muscle development in his neck, which took the blunt of the blow. He'll never play football at USC again because he is a senior. He has a pro career ahead of him, but freak accident, and he's an extremely lucky young man. So just keep him in your prayers. Thank you.
Thank you. What's next, Mr. City Clerk?
Next, at under 8 on the Agenda Action Items, is 8A, Director of Public Works Regarding Novice Bicycleist Presentation for Council to Be Conducted by the L.A. County Bicycle Coalition Place Grant Coordinator, Colin Bogart. And at 8A1 is a motion to note and file the report.
Thank you very much. Good evening. My name, Mayor Protam Friedman, city council members, city staff, good evening. My name is Colin Bogart. I'm the L.A. County Bicycle Coalition Place Grant Coordinator for the Place Grant Safe and Healthy Streets Project. Real quick, I'd like to thank you all for your continuing interest in bicycling in Glendale and your continued support for the Place Grant Safe and Healthy Streets Project. And in particular, I'd like to thank Councilmember Najarian for inviting me to do this presentation, and I want to say thank you for your patience.
That's because I'm the dumbest up here about bicycles. Everyone else has theirs and all, oh, I've got one of these. So I'm the ignorant one, so--
Well, I want to thank you--
Thanks are necessary.
Okay. So the topic for this evening, as I understand it, is if you're a novice cyclist, what do you need in order to get into cycling? Or if you're somebody who hasn't ridden in a long time, what do you need to get? And what's the gear that you want to-- And what's the gear that you want to get? So first off, if you are contemplating purchasing a bike, the first thing you want to ask yourself is where will you ride most often? And how will you ride? Are you going to be commuting? Are you going to be riding streets recreationally or paths? Are you going to be riding off-road? Are you riding for fun or transportation? These are important questions that you need to ask yourself before you go out to purchase a bicycle, because that's going to influence the kind of bike that you decide to get. Now, this is just four of the main kinds of bikes that are available. There's lots of different kinds of bikes, but this is basically your most basic types. You have a mountain bike, a road bike, a hybrid or commuter bike, and what's commonly known as a beach cruiser, or a single-speed bike. Obviously, the mountain bike is what you want if you're going to do a lot of off-road riding. Road bikes are not as comfortable, but they're generally faster. They're basically racing bikes. A hybrid bike or commuter bike is a little more practical for just getting around the city, but it's also what a lot of people end up riding if they just want to get out and do light recreational riding. It's typically, a hybrid bike is the bike that I recommend most often for people, because it has a more comfortable upright position and can be used for commuting as well. And typically comes with gears, so you can tackle those hills. And then there's also the beach cruiser, which you can pretty much ride anywhere you want, but it's a lot heavier, a little clunkier, but certainly a lot more comfortable. And if you're just doing a lot of flatland riding, it would work just fine. So once you've purchased your bike, what's the must-have gear? Number one, you must get a helmet. And most importantly, you want to make sure that that helmet is sized to fit you correctly. A good bike salesperson is going to help you do that. They're going to help you pick the helmet that fits you correctly, and they're going to show you how to wear it correctly. After that, you want to get gloves. Gloves will protect your hands in the event of a fall, but also helps to maintain a sturdy grip on your handlebars when your hands get sweaty. You won't slip as easily. You also, I also recommend sunglasses or some kind of eyewear, basically to prevent debris and bugs from flying in your eye. There's nothing worse than riding down a hill and having something fly in your eye, and then you're trying to like control your ride and get it out of your eye. So I always wear eyewear when I ride my bike. And then lights. If you're going to be riding at night, it's actually a law, you have to have a headlight, and you have to have at least a rear reflector, although these days, people opt for the rear blinker lights as well. So if you're going to ride at night, you must have lights. Other important gear that you want to make sure that you get, and it's typically, you're going to buy this at the same time that you purchase that bike, this is the stuff that's going to keep you from getting stranded in the middle of nowhere. Things like a patch kit, a spare tube, a multi-tool, a pump. Typically, the pump has a bracket on it that'll allow you to affix it right to the bicycle. The other items, the patch kit, the multi-tool, and the tube, you can either carry in a backpack or, I don't have a photograph of it, but you can also purchase a bag that attaches to the bottom of your seat, and you can put it in there. I can tell you this is very important. When I first started riding bikes, I was out on a ride, and I was in the middle of Griffith Park one morning, and I got a flat, and I didn't have any of this stuff with me. And so I learned my lesson very quickly. The other items you want to have is, it's recommended that you have a water bottle. You are going to get thirsty, and you can get a water bottle cage that'll fix right to the bike to carry that water bottle. And I also recommend a bike lock, especially if, you know, obviously, if you're going to go somewhere and leave your bike, you want to have a good bike lock. This image here is a picture of a U-lock. These are really the most ideal locks to have. They cost more money, but remember that an expensive lock is still cheaper than another bike. Clothing. Now, when it comes to bicycle, when it comes to clothing, really, you can pretty much wear anything you want when you ride. If you want to wear jeans and a T-shirt, you can. I personally can't stand riding in jeans. I prefer to be much more comfortable. So these are some clothing options that you can consider. Shorts and scorts. First thing I would tell you is that avoid cotton if you can. When you wear cotton while biking and you sweat, it just absorbs the sweat, it stays wet, it's not very fun. And if it's cooler out, you'll get cold. So you're better off buying bicycle clothing that utilizes quick-drying synthetic fabrics. In this case, on the top left, or the top row, those are your well-known spandex bike shorts that you can wear. They're a little awkward to wear in public, but they are actually very comfortable. If you would prefer not to go that route, on the bottom left, they have what are known as baggy shorts or mountain bike shorts. These are baggy shorts that actually have the bike shorts sewn into the inside. They make these both for men and women. They're quite comfortable, and you feel a little less awkward walking into the coffee shop wearing those. And then for the ladies, they also have what are called scorts, which is essentially a skirt with bicycle shorts sewn inside them. And I suppose if you're a guy and you want to wear them too, you can, but those are options that are available to you. You can also just go with regular running shorts or athletic shorts. Again, I recommend that you look for something that it's a synthetic fabric, so it's quick-drying and it doesn't absorb sweat. And you want to look for gusseted inseams. You want to look for inseams where the seam doesn't go right down the center, because that's what causes chafing, and chafing is not going to be a fun thing. So if there's anything you were going to invest in in terms of bicycle clothing, I recommend the shorts, whether it's the baggies or the spandex type. Jerseys and shirts.
And no underwear, right?
No underwear. With those shorts, the shorts are your underwear. Jerseys and shirts. Now, on the left, we have two examples of bicycle jerseys, a men's and women's model. You could certainly go with bike jerseys. The nice thing about them is, again, they're synthetic, so they're going to wick sweat and dry very quickly. The nice thing about bike jerseys is that they also have pockets in the back, which is really the best place to keep items that you want to carry with you, as opposed to in your pockets, like your pants pockets. You don't necessarily have to go that route. You can also go with simple athletic shirts like the ones pictured here. I've got a couple of tank tops and a couple of athletic T-shirts. Again, if you really want, you could wear just a cotton T-shirt, but I would remind you that that will just get wet, and I don't find it personally very comfortable, so I tend to avoid that. I can also mention that wool is especially nice to wear. Marino wool is very comfortable and works great in the cooler months. It doesn't wick away the sweat, but it does stay warm. Shoes and socks. With socks, it's the same thing as with everything else. I recommend you avoid cotton. There's a lot of companies that make synthetic socks for bicycling. Some of them are polyester blends. I'm a particular fan of wool blend socks. There's a particular brand called Smartwool that I like a lot, and there are other brands as well. But I do recommend that you avoid cotton socks also. And as far as shoes go, you could go with the fancy bicycling shoes that attach to the pedal if you want to. That, of course, will require that you get special pedals. If you're a novice, I don't really recommend you go that route. It takes a little getting used to, riding a bike with pedals that the shoe's attached to. The shoe on the bottom right there is a cycling shoe, but it's, you can walk around in it just like any regular shoe. And then there's a cutout in the bottom. I'm sorry, I don't have a picture of that, but there's a cutout in the bottom that if you decide you do want to switch to the more advanced pedals that attach, you can cut that cutout out, put a cleat on, and then now you can attach the shoe to the pedal. The shoes on the left are really designed just for riding with specialized pedals. They are a nice option if you're, if, once you get more advanced, those shoes tend to be more rigid, which transfers more of your pedaling force when you ride, but they also tend to be more difficult to walk in. So they really are pretty much a riding-only-type shoe. You can also just wear regular tennis shoes if you want. On my commuter bike, I pretty much just wear Converse high tops. The only thing I would say is you want to watch your laces. You want to tuck your laces in, because if your lace gets caught in the chain, it's a very frightening experience. You don't want to have that happen. So tuck those laces in if you just wear regular shoes when you're biking. So where do we get all this stuff? I recommend your local bike shop. Your local bike shop is going to have knowledgeable staff who are going to be able to answer your questions. They're going to be able to help you make the right choices. They're going to be able to help you pick the gear that best fits your needs and that best fits you. Also, your local bike shop is going to offer you service. You're going to need to get your bike serviced. It's going to need some tune-ups and things like that. And your local bike shop is really where you want to go and do that. I've put together here a quick list of bike shops in the area. All of these bike shops have been supportive of the Safe and Healthy Streets Project. Four of them are within the city limits of Glendale. One is just outside the city limits of Glendale, so they're all close by. I've shopped at every single one of them. I've got four bikes, so I have plenty of gear purchases to make. So these are your local bike shops. And finally, in closing, I'd like to just remind you to have fun, enjoy yourself. I'm not so sure about this couple here and this picture from the 1880s.
Right outside the White House.
It does. It looks like it's the White House.
It's Mr. Weaver.
But I just want to remind you to have fun with biking. And with that, I welcome any questions or comments that you may have.
Did it answer all your questions?
I have a question. It went a long way. Are there any routes in the city that you would recommend for novice bicyclists? I mean, Pasadena has the Rose Bowl, which is kind of a.
Yeah.
Enclave. Is there anything in Glendale that, you know, for those that are not quite comfortable with dealing with those whizzing cars, till at least you get your.
How long is your driveway, Mr. Najarian?
Actually, on the Bicycle Master Plan that Glendale adopted in '96, there's a bunch of recommended routes through Glendale that are on quieter residential streets. Those are actually very comfortable roads to ride. The map for that is on the website for the Safe and Healthy Streets Plan. It's www.la-bike.org/Glendale. It's also, you can also find it in the Planning Department's website as well. They have the BikeWay Master Plan uploaded there, and if you scroll, if you look for it, there's a map in there. That's one option. I've also heard that the GC3 area on the weekends is completely quiet. There's not much going on over there. I've heard that's a reasonable area to ride around. And if you want to go a little bit further, obviously, you can go over to Griffith Park, which is definitely a popular riding destination. But I'd say within the city limits of Glendale, if you look at the bike map, it has some recommended routes, which I think are quite good, and the GC3 area, basically.
Can people call you if they have any particular?
Certainly. Certainly. The number's 818-334-9731. Again, it's 818-334-9731, or they can email me at colin@la-bike.org.
I'll just add that as someone who hadn't ridden a bike since I was a little kid, and kind of came back to it last year, I was really terrified of riding in the street and thought that I wouldn't be able to do it. And the very first time I did, it was actually a lot better than I thought. The cars were more courteous than I thought that they would be, and it wasn't nearly as scary as when I was a child. Well, it wasn't bad at all. And I'll also say that when I come, when I ride to City Hall, I tend to just ride in a skirt, a regular skirt, and my little sandals. So you don't have to do the spandex, you don't have to get all, you know, dolled up unless you really want to. You can just ride around in your street clothes. And I bought, well, actually, somebody bought for me a really nifty thing called a peneer, which is like a saddlebag that goes on the back of your bike, and you can put grocery bags in it, and you can put books, and it holds my giant purse. And that way, I don't have to have anything on my back, and I can bring all of the things that I need to bring to work with me. And I highly recommend that if you're within five miles of your job, try riding a bike one day, and you'll be surprised at how easy it is and how good it feels. And just to be out there with the wind on your face, it's a very freeing kind of experience. I do have one card on this subject from Mike Mohill. It'll be two minutes?
I think it's three.
Okay, three minutes?
Okay, yeah. Councilman Mike Mohill, resident of Glendale. I wasn't going to speak on this, but I just found it kind of amusing, listening to the speaker before me, about the etiquette and the PC of riding a bicycle. Councilman Weaver, don't you remember, you're old enough to remember the J.C. Higgins bicycle that you got from Sears? We had a three-speed bike, or a 10-speed bike, maybe later on, and all we wore was a T-shirt, pair of shorts, junky tennis shoes, junky socks. We had no headgear. We had no elbow pads, no knee pads. Nowadays, it's like an OSHA regulation to go bicycle riding. I think the fun of it is going out of it. I mean, I don't know, it just seems like we're making a big thing out, mountains out of Mohills, you know? So anyway, for what it's worth, you know, the good old days of being a teenager, a young adult, again, you just put on anything you were wearing, unless your mother said, hey, make sure you dress warm. Two minutes.
Adam Mayor, for the record, I had a Schwinn bike with no gears. Didn't make them in those days.
Emblazoned with USC colors, by the way.
Well, I don't remember. It was red and something. Maybe it was gold. Could have been red and gold. Well, yeah, yeah. Put it in there so it'd make noise. Playing cards in, and then when they rotated, Ella would make noise, which was impressive in those days.
Mayor Protem Friedman, I didn't know whether this was the appropriate time to give the results of the survey that we've been circulating in the audience as to which pair of shorts and shirts and gear we would recommend for Mr. Weaver to wear on his bicycle.
You did a survey, you sneaky W.
On second thought, perhaps we should just send it directly to the newspaper, because...
Which one won?
Well, we'll consult. I'll show you. No, seriously, I just wanted to thank Colin for making this presentation. It is, he's been doing a great, great job with the while-on-loan to us from the Bicycle Coalition. And again, while we're here, I wanted to thank him for coordinating the pedestrian and bicycle census that was conducted. And he's just been doing a great job, visiting all of our community organizations and groups, merchants' associations, and bringing the word of what Glendale is doing with bicycle safety, bicycle access, and the same thing with pedestrians as well, so.
Absolutely.
Thank you.
Okay. If there's no further comments.
Yes.
Okay.
And Mayor, may I move 8A1?
Second.
We need a roll call?
Yes.
Either by roll call or unanimous consent.
Okay, are there any objections?
No objections.
Yeah.
Motion's approved.
Before we move to the next item, Mr. Starburt has a brief announcement.
Thank you, Mayor Protem Friedman. I should have brought this up during the announcements part, but we did have two events this week, Saturday and Monday evening, with community meetings up in the annex area, Locker Center area, to begin to open a discussion with the residents in that area about preparations for the upcoming rain season along the San Gabriel foothills and the station fire burn area. Laura and John were representing the city from the City Council on both Saturday and Monday. We had a tremendous turnout. Steve Zern, Director of Public Works, and George Chapchin, Director of Parks and Recreation, were the primary emcees, but we were joined by representatives of really all of the allied agencies that will be working with us to implement preparations for the upcoming rain season. Tremendous turnout. We filled the facility both times, 150 to 200 people each meeting, and I think it was very well received. People seemed to be very appreciative of both the efforts as well as the information. We did commit in the next three to four weeks to schedule additional community meetings when we'll have more specifics about the preparation plans that we'll be putting in place. Thank you, and thank you for attending with us, by the way.
Thank you. Mr. City Clerk, what's next on the agenda?
At 8B is Director of Human Resources Regarding Occupational Health Services. At B1 is motion authorizing city manager to execute a professional services agreement with the Glendale Adventist Occupational Medicine Center to provide occupational health services for the city of Glendale.
Mr. Doyle?
Members of the council, I'm Matt Doyle, Human Resources Director. Here to talk about the contract proposal for the Glendale Adventist Occupational Medicine Center. This is an item that came up during the budget year this year, as you recall. It's a very difficult year. Each department was asked to look at ways of reducing costs within their departments, and more importantly, looking at ways of sort of reexamining our core services and core functions within each department. In the Human Resources Department, for nearly 20 years, we have operated our own in-house medical clinic to deal with all of our occupational medical needs, primarily those relating to preplacement physicals, regulatory exams, our wellness programs, return-to-work examinations, and all those things that are designed to ensure that our employees are fit for duty to work for us in a safe manner. This program has worked very well, and it's provided a great... This program has worked very well, and it's provided a great, great level of service, both to the organization and to its employees. But again, in reexamining our core mission, we found that there are tremendous savings that could be made by contracting the service out and reexamining how we administer these programs. Essentially, what we're proposing is that the one component of our employee health services involving just the provision of episodic care to our employees, if someone has an illness or injury that occurs and they happen to be at work, they currently are able to go to the clinic and take care of it, and in most cases, come right back to work. Very convenient. That is viewed in some regards as somewhat of a luxury and probably not something that's entirely necessary. The change in focus that we're looking at is really to eliminate that episodic care component and really focus on the core requirements, the regulatory-type exams, the fitness-for-duty exams, the preplacement physicals, the things, again, that are mandated through either Cal OSHA. For the Police Department, we have peace officer standards and training. Post for the Fire Department, we have all types of regulatory exams that relate to our firefighters and other examinations in those areas. We believe that we can contract those services out, and given the fact that in our own backyard here, we have some of the top medical facilities in the area, we thought it would be a good thing to explore. Over the past summer, we did do a RFP, and we laid out the services that we were looking for. We got a good response, and we went through a very thorough process, which involved both review and analysis of the submitted proposals from different agencies. We had site visits to the various clinics that were interested in getting our business, and we did a rather thorough interview and presentation process in August with representatives from my department and various departments throughout the city. Our unanimous conclusion was to go with Glendale Adventist Occupational Medical Services. They are conveniently located here on South Glendale Avenue. We actually do have a prior worker arrangement with them, as they were our consulting physicians for our in-house Employee Health Services Clinic. They also do some of our workers' compensation business as well. Again, I bring this item before you with somewhat mixed emotions. Employee Health Services has served this organization very well, and it is certainly difficult to close shop, but essentially, we are finding that we can save a significant amount of money by going with an outside service provider to provide these mandated components of our occupational health services. And we have a great deal of confidence in Glendale Adventist to continue to provide those services and do a really good job. We're very, very impressed with the presentation that they made, and very pleased to have them on board. With that, I'd be happy to answer any questions. I also do, we do have some officials from Glendale Adventist here today. The CEO, Maury Dean, is here, as well as Judy Van Houten, who runs the Occupational Clinic, and we'd be doing most of our work with Judy. So with that, if you have any questions.
Thank you. Any questions? Mr. Starburt?
We might note, Ms. Friedman, as noted in the staff report, Matt's referenced so in his oral presentation, significant savings. We anticipate in excess of $400,000 a year. That is considerable savings to the organization. As a result, we're looking forward to our partnership with Adventist and your support, but it is considerable savings by making this move. Now, Mr. Najarian and I have both benefited from our current employee wellness program. We were over today receiving our seasonal flu shot. That is another benefit from our in-house group, but we'll be doing the same thing. Oh, Laura, you were there as well. Charm?
No.
No? Laura and I both cried.
Did you get your lollipop?
No, but we got a superhero bandage when we left. But I assume we will get the same treatment at Adventist Occupational Center. Mr. Dean, complete with superhero bandages?
As long as Judy does, not me.
Okay.
A point of order, Madam Mayor Protem. I believe those are called superhero boo-boo strips. It's the technical term.
Thank you.
Mr. Starburt, what happens to the employees?
Members of the Council, we have tried very, very hard to find other places for them within the organization and have been quite successful. Ms. Fisher and a member of her staff will be joining the HR Department to essentially oversee this contract with Adventist. They will also be continuing on many of the programs that we currently do that are non-clinical in nature, such as our Employee Assistance Program, our ADA and Fair Employment and Housing Interactive Process for dealing with disabled and work-restricted employees, as well as our compliance efforts with the Family Medical Leave Act. So we will have a place for Ms. Fisher and one other employee. Third employee, we happen to have an opening also in Human Resources in our Benefits Administration area. We were able to absorb that person into our shop. Mr. Marty Peters, who is a longtime health services nurse, nurse practitioner, has announced his retirement, and he will be retiring at the end of October. And I have one other position of an individual that I'm trying to place elsewhere in the organization.
Okay. Thank you.
Any other questions?
Like a motion?
Question?
8B1?
Second.
Councilmember Straman?
Yes.
Najarian?
Yes.
Mayor Quintero?
Hi.
Mayor Protem Friedman?
Yes.
Next, ma'am.
Who's next?
At 8C is Fire Chief Regarding Fire Company Inspection Fees. At C1 is Resolution Improving the Imposition of Fees.
Good evening, Madam Mayor Protem and members of the City Council. Harold Scoggins, Fire Chief. Tonight, we bring before you fire company inspection fees, and this was an item that we discussed back in May during the budget study sessions on additional ways to generate revenue to offset some of our costs. Annually, our fire companies go out and inspect approximately 2,500 businesses and residential apartment units that are six units or more in the community to make sure that they have fire life safety attached to those businesses. Biannually, we expect approximately 5,000 of these occupancies. Now, the California Fire Code both authorizes and requires the local fire department to do these inspections. Over the years, they've become more complicated with the daily schedules and different things attached to them, and it's become very difficult to offset all of our costs through our basic budgeting process. And this was a way for us to offset some of our costs with approximately $75,000 that these inspections would generate. The cost that we estimate an average inspection to be is approximately $30, and that's a half-hour inspection, and this will be done every two years, which we think is a reasonable approach. As you look at some of the other cities in the staff report, I believe our fee is, will be one of the lowest, actually, when you compare it. And those are the only cities that we use that are in our actual comparison group, but there are many, many other cities in the local area and all throughout the state that actually charges these fees. We'll use the fees to offset the general fund costs, which would reduce some of the fires expenses, and also some of the data and maintenance needs that we have to maintain the records and the records management associated with it. We think it's a reasonable approach to offset some of our fees, and more than happy to answer any questions that you may have.
Questions? Thank you. I have one card. Mike Mohill.
This is Cost Recovery, right?
Yes.
Cost Recovery. Wrong with that.
Madam Mayor Friedman and Council staff, Mike Mohill, resident. First, I'd like to thank the Glendale Fire Department for their fantastic work they have done recently, putting out all the fires throughout the city, and also the Police Department. I know it's a dangerous job, and I'd like to thank them publicly. Second, why does Glendale have to be known as the city with all the fees? Why can't we be known as a city without the fees? We're always a fee here and a fee there. It's like Arnold, our governor said, they tax me in the morning, they tax me in the evening, they tax me for lunch, tax, tax, tax. Just another tax. Don't we bring in enough revenue from sales and, you know, just, why don't you just tax, why don't you just tax everybody for breathing or walking across the street? I know we need revenue, but when is it going to stop? I hate coming up here every so many months and ask the question, why do we have to constantly ask for the public to cough up more fees? We pay, we pay sales tax, we pay property tax, fees for this and fees for that. When is it going to stop? The public would like to know that, I would like to know that. Now, every couple of years, I'll ask the fire department to come to my house and inspect my yard to see if I have too many shrubber, too many trees, you know, should I cut things back? Yes, now they're going to charge me 30 bucks, maybe 15.
Six units and above.
Okay. But it's just, it's nickel and diming, you know? Nickel and diming. Why do we have to be known as the city? Like, if you say, well, other cities charge a fee, yeah. But why, you know, this is Glendale. I don't live in Pasadena, Burbank, or Toluca Lake. I live in Glendale, and I'm concerned it goes on in Glendale, not in Los Angeles, not in Santa Monica. Now, this is my hometown. Like Mr. Weaver said, I've been graduated from Glendale High School in 1960, and I've seen a lot of changes. And one of the changes is the constantly looking for places to revenue. Wasn't too long ago, you wanted to send a fee for the Shoal Canyon, let Los Angeles come in, put their dump in our dump site to get some more revenue. Please, gentlemen, not another, not another fee. And again, I want to thank the fire department and the police department for their service to the community.
Thank you, Mr. Mohill.
Madam Mayor, I'd like to move 8C1.
Wait a second?
Second.
Can I have a roll call, please?
Councilmember Straman?
Yes.
Najarian?
Yes.
Mayor Quintero?
Hi.
Mayor Protem Friedman?
Yes. Can you read the next item on the agenda, please?
At 9 under hearings, at 9A is Director of Planning, Regarding Appeal of Zoning Use Certificate Number PUC 2006-0234, located at 2831 through 2833 Honolulu Avenue, Montrose Collection. At 9A1 is a motion continuing the matter to prepare findings in support of approving the revocation. At 9A2 is a motion continuing the matter to prepare findings in support of denying the revocation.
Thank you. With that, I will go to staff.
May I...
Yes, Mr. Najarian.
May I address the council? Madam Mayor, I want to be consistent with my prior positions on this matter. If you recall, I had recused myself from the, several times this item came before us. The issue being a conflict, but not a financial conflict, I see it as an ethical conflict and a conflict in trust. I had an attorney-client relationship with the applicant, Mr. Ivasian, several years ago, and I don't think it would be fair for me to state, to participate in this matter. Obviously, if I were to vote for him, there would be thoughts that, oh, well, you, this is your client, you voted for your former client. Were I to vote against him, he may, he may think, well, you learned certain things about me in that confidential relationship we have, and you're holding that against me. So to avoid any appearance of impropriety, I will recuse myself, and I would also ask to be excused from the rest of the meeting and not to return for the oral communications portion. I'm just going to head home with that. There's no objection from my colleagues.
Can I write objections?
That's opening it up. Does it matter?
You are excused.
Thank you very much.
Madam Mayor, I would recommend that at this time you open the public hearing. I believe staff is going to be presenting not only a staff report, but I believe their case, as I understand it.
Okay. I will open the public hearing, and we'll first go to staff.
Thank you very much, Madam Mayor Protem. Milka Toledo is going to give a brief staff report on this aspect of the case that's before you tonight. Also, the zoning administrator and members of the staff from Neighborhood Services and the Police Department are here to answer any questions that you may have related to the case. Thank you very much, Milka, please.
Yes, thank you. My name is Milka Toledo. I am the case planner for this project located at 2831 through 2833 Honolulu Avenue. Good evening, Mayor Protem Friedman and council members. The case before you is basically a hearing for an appeal to the City Council of a June 17, 2009 decision by the Planning Commission. The Planning Commission's decision was to sustain the zoning administrator's decision to revoke the parking, excuse me, the zoning use certificate, which is, zoning use certificate PUC 2060234. On March 10 of 2009, the City Council made a motion to sustain, if you recall, the Board of Zoning Appeals decision to revoke the parking reduction permit. Subsequently, the zoning administrator revoked the above-referenced zoning use certificate on March 26, 2009. And at that time, an appeal was filed by the property owners to the Planning Commission appealing her decision. The zoning administrator originally revoked the zoning use certificate because it lacked a parking reduction permit to maintain their current square footage. And although this case does have a history of actions, as noted in your staff report, this is a separate action related exclusively to the revoked zoning use certificate. The, if you have not, I believe you've already received a letter that the appellant submitted stating that they do not need to provide parking. This is incorrect. They, the location currently has 26 onsite parking spaces, which serve all tenants on the property, including Montrose Collection. According to the zoning code, a property whose use changes or expands requiring additional parking is generally required to provide additional parking associated with the change or expansion, in accordance with Title 30, Section 30.32030B1. And it provides that upon a, upon change of a building, which creates additional floor area devoted to a use, additional parking must be provided for such new floor area without diminishing the existing parking. In the case of Montrose Collection, the expansion required them to provide 12 spaces for the new use in the expanded area, less than three spaces required for the immediately previous use in the expanded space, requiring nine additional spaces for the expansion. The city's intent is not to shut down the business. Simply, they need to comply with, in this case, the zoning code. The zoning code regulations, as it relates to having the required number of parking spaces, obviously, in order to operate, you need a zoning use certificate. So everything basically needs to be in compliance with the law. Originally, a parking reduction permit was filed to allow the expansion of the use without providing the required nine additional parking spaces, as I alluded to earlier. Upon revocation of the parking reduction permit, Montrose Collection did not have a valid parking reduction permit, and therefore, does not comply with parking requirements for a full-service restaurant. Because Montrose Collection does not have a valid parking reduction permit for the use in order to operate as a full-service restaurant, they will need to apply for a new zoning use certificate and return to the previous flora, that is, before the expansion, and build a wall separating the new expansion and the previous existing square footage. If a new zoning use certificate has been issued for a full-service restaurant, Montrose Collection may reclaim the original square footage by filing and obtaining approval of a new parking reduction permit or parking use permit and a new conditional use permit. As previously indicated, and it's noted in your staff report, a banquet hall use is not allowed in the C1 zone. If Montrose Collection in the future seeks to expand, it must do so as a full-service restaurant. That basically concludes my presentation. I do have some exhibits posted on the panels and a PowerPoint if, for the audience, if that is a request by the council.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Before I open this up to the rest of the public, I just want to point out, first of all, that under our code, Municipal Code Section 2.88.090, the appellant has the burden of proof. We're going to start calling cards now. The first person who's going to speak is the representative for the app... The first person who's gonna speak is the representative for the appellate, Derek Tabone. Mr. Tabone, you'll come up to the podium. You've indicated that you would like thirty minutes of time. We normally give ten to fifteen minutes.
And I'll short.
And then a rebuttal. But I'm willing to give you the thirty minutes if you'll make, if you will, you know, give up the right for the rebuttal, or you can get, take fifteen minutes now and then have a rebuttal afterwards.
I'll take the fifteen minutes now and then a rebuttal.
Okay.
Don't mind, thank you. First of all, I have some, an inquiry. This is a de novo hearing, and it is a quasi-judicial hearing. My client is entitled to the participation of unbiased people who have not made a prior decision on that, and I wish to ask this council if anyone thinks they have the ability to make an unbiased decision based upon the facts, in this case, at this time. I'm asking whether or not any of the, the council members should recuse themselves of having already decided what's gonna happen here today. I don't hear anything.
And under clause thousand, that's certainly an appropriate question. It's merely for the council to indicate that they'll keep an open mind and base their decision on the facts and the law.
Would you like us to go down the council and ask each member?
No, I'm, I'm satisfied if they, if the council doesn't speak up, I'm satisfied that they've affirmatively saying they can make it, keep an open mind on this matter.
Okay.
Second question's for the city attorney's office. The city is both prosecutor and judge in this case, and I need to know on which side Mr. Howard sits, if he is representing the city as prosecutor in this matter, or if he's giving unbiased advice to the city council in their, in their role as a neutral.
Based on Marango Band of Indians, I am the advisor to the city council. I am not in advocacy role tonight.
Thank you. Third thing, my understanding is that because this is a de novo hearing, the city's the one trying to revoke the permit. This is different than the usual situation where somebody's asked for permit, it's been denied, and it's an appeal. It's the other way around, and the city actually has the burden of proof in this to prove that the Montrose Collection is not in compliance with the current zoning code. Now, you may decide that for yourselves later, but that is our position. But initially, what I want to talk about is, is there an agreement, Mr. Hagani, that the restaurant use in twenty-eight thirty-three was established in nineteen sixty-six?
Mr. Mayor, members of council, at this point, it's probably appropriate to ask to Mr. Tabone to just present his case rather than engage in continuous questioning of either witnesses and/or the director of planning.
And the reason I'm doing that now is because this is an evidentiary hearing. You're supposed to take evidence, at least that's my understanding, to make a decision based upon the facts and the law. My contention, all right, and I'll go through my contention, you can, you can answer them later if you like. My contention is that the twenty-eight thirty-three space, which is one of the spaces noted on the zoning use certificate, was established in nineteen sixty-six as a restaurant. In nineteen sixty-six, it was in a three, C three zone. In nineteen sixty-six, a three Z, I'm sorry, C three zone for a restaurant required zero onsite parking spaces. That use has been continuous, it has not changed. Second part is that the space that was converted, twenty-eight thirty-one, I don't see any evidence as to what the prior use was or what the prior requirement for parking was for that space. I have heard no evidence. I don't know what the conversion space was going to be or what the conversion requirement is. It is our contention that there can be no requirement for twenty-eight thirty-three, one of the addresses specifically noted on the zoning use certificate, to have any onsite parking spaces. There are currently twenty-six spaces. The city seems to believe, or at least has alleged, that nine spaces are required for the conversion of twenty-eight thirty-one from some use, which they've not described, to another use, which is restaurant. The restaurant requires ten spaces per thousand. Conversion was twelve hundred ten square feet, twelve spaces. But I don't know what the prior use was, and I see no evidence that it wasn't also a ten use, I, I, I'm sorry, a requirement for ten spaces per one thousand square feet. The other problem I have is that the city zoning code provides that, well, first of all, in terms of due process argument, the city is limited to revoking the permit for those reasons stated in the original revocation letter, which is for failure to comply with the parking requirements, not any other requirement. And it's failure to provide for parking as a full use or a full-service restaurant, which is what is on the face of the zoning use certificate. Now, your code section thirty dash was thirty point thirty-two point oh thirty talks about minimum parking requirements and expansion or remodeling of building or change in use. Part B one talks about expansion of a building or use generally, but part B five talks about change of use generally, which is more specific, and therefore that's the controlling subsection. When the use of a building changes to a use as required by section thirty point thirty-two point oh fifty, to have the same number of parking spaces as the immediate preview, immediately previous use, no additional parking spaces shall be required for the new use regardless of the number of spaces actually provided by the previous use, provided the previous was legally established and the number of spaces has not decreased. Until the city establishes what the prior requirement was by use, they cannot require any, any additional spaces, and I haven't heard evidence of that, and certainly it's not in the staff report, and it's not in anything that was provided up until now. When a change in use requires more off-street parking than previous use, additional parking spaces shall be provided equal number to the difference between the total number of spaces required by the new use and the number of spaces required for the immediately previous use. Okay? We don't know what the immediately previous use was, so we don't know what the conditional or change of use requires. Now, interestingly, subsection C talks about change of use exceptions. Subsection C two says, change of use in a space under two thousand square feet, this is a twelve hundred ten square foot change. The occupancy in any tenant space of less than two thousand square feet may be interchanged among the following land uses without the need to provide additional parking beyond that currently provided onsite or in covenant onsite spaces. And there's a list, taverns, daycare centers, general offices, business support services, but it includes also restaurants full service. It is our contention that under this subsection, because this change of use was less than two thousand square feet, from one of the uses on that list to another use on that list, that no additional parking spaces are required under the code. So, the second question is, which portion of this, of the, of the building or the use is not currently in compliance? If I understand the staff report correctly, it is a twenty-eight thirty-one, which is not currently in compliance. But twenty-eight thirty-one has twenty-six spaces available. There is no showing how many spaces are available for any of the space, any of the uses on the building site prior to that. There's no showing that, that twenty-eight thirty-one didn't have nine spaces or twelve spaces or eighteen spaces prior to the change in use. Therefore, there has been no showing that the conditions been met to revoke the permit, i.e., that twenty-eight thirty-one doesn't have sufficient parking spaces for the change of use from whatever it was, which we don't know, to a current restaurant. That's second problem. The third problem is what the city's asking is that the space be, be, be partitioned off and no longer used, and just the old space used. Two questions for the, for the city council. Since the prior space is grandfathered in as a banquet hall, what happens when then? Do they go back to a full banquet hall use and the city drops their protest in, or their objection in Superior Court to the current petition for writ of mandate? But the second question, which is more interesting, is now that the bathrooms have been moved into the new space by permit pulled from the city, what happens to the restaurant? When they put a partition on, if that's what the city council orders, there will be no bathrooms for the, for the place. Is it gonna be allowed to operate without a bathroom? Because there will not be any. The bathrooms have been moved into the twelve hundred and ten square feet, when that space was demolished and remodeled again with a permit issued by the city and approved by the city. So, those are issues we have with the, with the, with what the hearing is about and whether or not the city has in fact demonstrated that the restaurant is not in compliance with the zoning code. Our position is, one, because it's a change of use under two thousand square feet, they don't have to have additional spaces. Two, that the original business space, twenty-eight thirty-three, which has been going for forty-four years now, isn't required to make any change or have any additional spaces because it is, it is licensed for zero spaces. That's what was happening in nineteen sixty-six. We confirmed that in front of the, the planning commission. That use hasn't changed, it hasn't been upgraded, it hasn't increased. They had the right to operate with zero onsite parking spaces in sixty-six. You cannot take that right away because they expanded into an adjoining space and then take away the right to be for the adjoining space. And the third thing is, just overall, there's been no showing that there isn't insufficient parking for the change of use with the twenty-six spaces that are there. With that, and if you have some questions, I'll answer them, but those are our positions. I would like the council to either ask the planning or staff to either refute the facts that I've stated, or allow me to ask them those questions.
Thank you. Are there any questions for the appellant? I'm gonna go to the next card, and then I'll come back to.
Do you have one question?
Oh, sorry.
Yes. Mr. Taboni?
Yes, councilman.
Am I pronouncing that right?
It's Taboni, actually.
Taboni, okay. The issue of grandfathering that you raised, so, are you, I just want to make sure I understood you clearly. Are you contending that the space that is now being called, that was expanded into, that that was always a part of the pre-existing restaurants for public use?
No, what I'm, I don't know what the use was before that. I don't know whether it was a space that required more or less than ten spaces.
Well, no, I'm not talking about the parking spaces. I just want to come to that. Are you suggesting that it was used as public space for the public, for either restaurant service or banquet or something? You say you don't know what it was used for at all in previous times, so, I don't understand that because you're, I think you've stated in the past when you were here, let's say, de novo hearing, but you have stated in the past that, that your clients did expand the use.
No, I believe that.
Well, they converted the space, you said.
We converted the space. There was a prior use there, it was empty. When my clients took it over, it was vacant. It had not been rented for a while. What the prior use was, we don't know. Whether or not the city, the city hasn't shown what that prior use was, and what I'm looking at, when I went through the amount of parking required, some require two point seven per thousand, some require four spaces per thousand, such as general retail and service.
I'm sorry to interrupt, but, but I wasn't asking about the parking. I understand your points on that. I just am simply asking about whether or not you have any knowledge, your clients have any knowledge of, of the prior use of that space.
No.
You say you don't know what it was used for.
It was empty when my client, when my client bought the business in two thousand four, the adjoining space was empty.
Okay.
What it had been, we understand there had been other uses there, including a school, but I don't know how long ago that was.
Thank you.
Okay, what I'm gonna do is, I'm gonna take the other cards, and then I'm gonna ask staff to respond to the issues that you brought up.
Thank you.
Okay, so, next card is Robert Thompson, followed by Sharon Thompson. Members of the public will have five minutes to speak.
Mayor Protem, members of council and staff. My name is Robert Thompson. I am here again in support of the decision of the zoning administrator and the planning commission to revoke the zoning use certificate of the Montrose Collection banquet hall. I'm not going to rehash all the ins and outs of the situation as I have in the past. All of you are fully aware of the facts as were presented previously. There is, however, one glaring difference in the facts. Previously, the Montrose Collection and their attorney, Derek Taboni, claimed they operated solely as a full-service restaurant with an occasional private party or banquet. Now, at previous city council and planning commission hearings, they fully admit that their operation is primarily a banquet hall and always has been. So, I guess their previous statements were not factual. Business continues to operate as usual, with banquets most every weekend, Friday night, Saturday night, and Sunday. Revoking the zoning use certificate is the right thing to do. I urge you to sustain the decisions of the zoning administrator and the planning commission to revoke their zoning use certificate. Thank you.
Thank you. Sharon Thompson, followed by Fred Tykert. I'm sorry if I've mispronounced that.
Good evening, Mayor Protem, councilpersons and staff. My name is Sharon Thompson, a concerned resident living close by the Montrose Collection Restaurant and Banquet Hall. First, I would like to congratulate Mr. Quintero, who isn't here, and Ms. Friedman on the election results and for joining the council in deliberating on very important issues that affect our city. When I came to council the very first time and spoke about the situation at Montrose Collection, Mr. Weaver was mayor. That is how much time has gone by, a lifetime for some. Here we are again, facing some of our greatest challenges with the new council. Your staff has presented you with all the information needed to make a fair and appropriate decision in upholding the decision of the planning commission in denying Montrose Collection their zoning use certificate. I thank you for your time.
Please state your name for the record.
My name is Fred Tykert, twenty-five-ten Countryside Lane, Locker Center, and Mayor Protem, city council, city staff, those who are left here in the audience, and all my friends in Glendale. I am here for just a couple of reasons. One is, and I, I want to tell you, first of all, that I do appreciate the city council. I know you, you do a lot of work, and I do appreciate everything you do, right or wrong. And sometimes, people do make mistakes, however. The city, for example, I got a letter in the mail saying I had to remove my fence. It was in between. I had a fence down the side and a fence across the front, and I was told in the mail by the city of Glendale, I had to remove my fence. Well, I happened to inform the city that my house, the houses there, were not even in the city of Glendale. They were in the county, so, it was nice. I got a letter saying later on that it was, that they had made a mistake and everything. I came to California in nineteen fifty-nine, accepted my first teaching position in Glendale in nineteen fifty-nine, and I retired in nineteen ninety-nine. That's fifty years. Just last June, I retired. I was a teacher in Glendale all fifty years, and I ended up at Hoover High School for the last twenty-five years, teaching economics. I would, I'm here basically to try to find out what is going on. I'm, like many of you, you probably are wondering what's going on also. So, I am the owner of the restaurant, and I'm here basically to find out what is going on, and I know you will be fair, and if you have any questions, I will be happy to answer them for you.
Mr. Drayman.
Yes, just one question. Mr. Tykert, did you say you're the owner of the restaurant or the owner of?
The owner of the building, the property, yeah.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you.
Hi, you happen to know what that twelve hundred ten thousand, twelve hundred square foot piece was?
I'm not, I'm not sure what it was. It, it was somebody, I think, maybe tutoring or doing something in there at that time. I'm not.
You, you had leased that?
Yes.
You don't remember what for?
Well, like I say, there, there was a, a group that was doing some tutoring or tutoring service, I would say.
Mr. Drayman.
Yes, sir. One more question. Mr. Tykert, how long have you owned the property?
I've had the property for approximately five years.
The questions. Okay, well, thank you for coming, and hopefully you'll get some answers as we proceed with this hearing.
Right, okay, thank you.
Okay, at this time, I'll ask staff to come back and to respond to the appellant's arguments and questions. You will get five minutes.
Thank you, Mr. and Ms. Madam Mayor Protem. I'm going to explain the, try to respond to some of the points from a planning standpoint, and Mr. Garcia will, who's our counsel for the planning department, will explain from a legal standpoint. There are three main points that were raised. One was this notion of grandfathering. What grandfathering in layman's, layman's term and as applied to planning is, is when a use is defined per, an older definition and then, and a use has been changed. In this case, we're talking. In this case, we're talking about a use that prior to 2002 was defined as restaurant use in the zoning code, and prior to 2002, in the zoning code, we did not distinguish between a restaurant use and a banquet hall. A banquet hall, as of 2002, is defined as a much more intense use, and what that means, the first aspect of this, that additional parking is required. Once you expand a use, as in expand the, the square footage of a use, you lose your grandfathering rights. And at that moment, then the, the expansion is subject to the requirements of the zoning code per the new code. And that is the case in this particular situation, and that's why a parking use, a parking reduction permit was required to meet the parking requirements for the expansion. And we know that the applicant understood that because they applied for a parking reduction permit. Therefore, they understood that new parking was required for that use. The other reference was to the 2,000, what we call the 2,000 square foot rule, that is for any tenant up, up to 2,000 square feet can change the use from some of the uses to a more intensified use per the code if they are no more than 2,000 square feet for the entire tenant's space. That does not apply to any addition that you add to an existing use which is less than 2,000 square feet, which is what I think Mr. Toboni was saying. The use of the banquet hall at Montrose Collection is over 5,000 square feet. Therefore, and to begin with, prior to the expansion, they were about 4,000 square feet or more, and they were not subject to the 2,000 square foot rule, and this, this would not apply to them, and they would not be able to take advantage of that benefit. I think these are some of the concepts that I wanted to address from a planning standpoint. I think Mr. Garcia has some legal points to add to this.
Thank you, Madam Mayor Protem. My name is Mike Garcia from the legal department. I just wanted to address a couple of other, and I'm here on behalf of, representing the planning department on this appeal. I wanted to address just a couple of issues raised by Mr. Toboni, both in his letter and in his comments. The first comment that's raised in both settings was that because they, the use did not require parking when it was established in 1966, any expansion which required that delta of nine spaces was covered by the 26 spaces already provided on site. That theory is wrong for two reasons. One, there's, there's no indication anywhere in this record that the 26 spaces are legally allotted to that. But second, probably more importantly, the code's very clear. Your code required parking is, for a non-conforming parking situation, is the amount of parking you actually have. So, in other words, prior to their expansion, those 26 spaces that they had on site for all those uses on site, was their code required parking. So, when they expanded into that additional 1,200 square foot space, that they had to provide the nine additional spaces above and beyond those 26 spaces. They could either provide them, or they could get a parking reduction permit. They chose to get the parking reduction permit. So, the 26 spaces is not sufficient to cover that amount of onsite parking. The second issue that I wanted to briefly address was that the issue raised about the record not having any information about what was there before, actually, the, the, the report that's before you and also the report that went to the planning commission had discussed the use that was there prior to that. It was an office use prior to the expansion, and as, and as a result, they had to provide the difference between what's required from an office and what's required for a full-service restaurant. So, that was, and that was indeed the whole point of the parking reduction permit hearing, was to outline the fact that they needed this additional parking to go from office to restaurant. So, those are the two issues. Oh, the other issue I think that I should address is what will happen to the bathrooms? The, the city staff's view is that they, without the, the required parking, they have to put the, the space back to the way it was before the parking reduction permit was granted. And, and by putting that back, they have to put it back so that complies with all codes, both public health and City of Glendale Building and Safety Code. So, that would be required, if the code requires them to have bathrooms, and I'm pretty sure it does, they would be required to put those back in a, in a code-compliant manner. Hassan mentioned the non-conforming, the loss of it, and he said it from a planning perspective. Let me say it from how I view it as representing the planning department. Once you expand, if you have a grandfather or non-conforming right, you lose that once you expand, and they can't go back and then now ask for that grandfathering right to be, to be put back into place. So, that's the extent of the comments that I wanted to address with respect to Mr. Toboni, and if you have any questions, I'm available to answer.
Any questions?
Yes.
Mr. Drayman.
This issue of grandfathering that was raised, and I don't know whether Mr. Garcia or Mr. Higani should or could answer it. I mean, Mr. Higani speaking from a planning standpoint and Mr. Garcia from a legal one, but there is, the inference made that somehow this grandfather, notion of grandfathering is absolute, that, that if, if a business exists under one set of zoning language and over time, the zoning language changes, that the notion of grandfathering is just absolute, it never, you know, you can never, nothing will... For example, suppose a business goes out of business, sits for three years or two years without operating as a restaurant in this case, or perhaps has a change of use, or even if it doesn't, how absolute is that notion of grandfather?
From my viewpoint, a legal non-conforming right continues to extend that it's actually operated, so in a, in a case where it's discontinued or abandoned, that grandfather right would be lost in that situation as well. So, it is not permanent or forever. And certainly, with respect to expansions, once, once a use that's non-conforming has expanded, any grandfathering rights are lost.
Well, what about in the case of a restaurant that has not expanded? And time goes by and restaurant goes out of business, it's offered for lease, another restaurant comes along. None of them have expanded into this mysterious space that no one seems to know what it was used for, including the owner, with any real clarity, apparently. And, and then, and then they apply to, the current business applies to expand or chooses to expand for use as public space. Wouldn't the grandfathering have lapsed prior anyway?
If a, again, if a business that has a non-conforming right ceases to operate, and I forget, our code has a specific timetable, it's either six months or a year. At that point, it's one year, after that point, the, the non-conforming right ceases to exist. And so, if a year passed and then someone came and said, "I want to continue to operate this business," or "I want to expand it," they will have lost that non-conforming status.
Let me see if I have one question, I think. If I can read my notes correctly, does the square footage for, say, storage space or non-public space contribute to the parking requirement?
Yes.
Well, storage space or non-public space which has been non-restaurant use consistently, does that contribute to the parking requirement?
Well, if the storage space was used by the restaurant prior, we determine the intensity of the use based on the gross square footage. In other words, a restaurant oftentimes has bathrooms, waiting areas, kitchen areas, and seating areas, and we consider all of that within the square footage of the restaurant. So, the answer is no, that would still be considered part of the restaurant use, I guess, if that's the answer to the question.
My last question, there's one other. My last question is with regard to, to these bathrooms, that, that something was made that the city approved the permits for these bathrooms. Is there an implication below the surface there or above the surface there that because they approved construction of two bathrooms, that that somehow confers a change of use for that space? For example, if I own a building and I operate a restaurant and part of it, and part of it is storage, or I lease the space next door, next to my restaurant, and am using it as storage, and I seek to put, to move my bathrooms into that storage space, does it confer somehow by the city permitting that, that, that we're agreeing as a city to allow it to be used as restaurant space or banquet space?
Well, one, I don't want to try to imply too much into Mr. Toboni's comments, so you'd have, probably have to ask him. But two, I think anytime a permit's issued but is inconsistent with the zoning code, for example, that would not confer a vested right to continue that, that operation in outer compliance with the zoning code.
Thank you.
Thank you. I'm going to give the appellant five minutes to respond.
Thank you.
Before I close the public hearing.
Let me respond to a couple of points. One, Mr. Higani's definition of a grandfathering is a little too narrow. A grandfather use occurs when a use which was permitted and compliant under a prior code becomes non-compliant. It doesn't have, the use itself doesn't have to change. Grandfathering also exists where requirements, peripheral requirements such as parking change, you can't take a restaurant and run it out of business because you changed the parking requirement for the restaurant. So, it includes not only change of use or actual use, but also the peripherals to the use. Second, Mr. Tijer bought the building about the same time this space was empty. He bought it about 2004, 2005, which is why he doesn't know what was in that space before. He bought it either the tenant had been there a very short time, or was there a very short time, or it was empty when he bought it, because he bought it about the same time my clients leased that portion of the property. Three, my clients applied for a parking reduction permit because after discussion with the city staff, they told them they needed one. They never told them they didn't need one, they always told them they did one. And, and when Mr. Higani talks about, for that matter, Mr. Garcia talks about the, the 1,200 square foot rule or 2,000 square foot rule not being applicable, I urge you actually read what that code section says. Change of use exceptions. Upon the change of use of an existing building or lot or portion of a building or lot, additional parking and loading spaces shall be provided for the new use, not the combined use, not the, the new use, as required by this chapter, over and above the number of parking and loading spaces required by this chapter for the prior years only, with the following exceptions. Exception number two, change of use under 2,000 square feet. They're reading the code wrong. It's just flat wrong. It's a common sense English reading. Only the new use has to have additional parking. They can't go back and now say, "The other 3,900 square feet that existed before now has to come up to the code as well." The only change is for the new space, and the new space that was under 2,000 square feet by the code doesn't require any additional parking. This was a conversion of 1,200 square feet. He was, Mr. Garcia indicated that there was no evidence that the 26 spaces was allotted to anything or was required or whatever, but the problem is, it's not my burden to prove where the 26 spaces are. It is a city burden as the person or the entity trying to revoke the permit to prove that there's non-compliance with the code. If you read the revocation letter, what due process requires is that the city be able to prove non-compliance and that we be given both the facts and the contentions and be able to respond to them. We still don't know what that prior use was. We still don't know how many spaces were required for that use prior to its conversion to restaurant space. When I talked about converting the bathrooms, one of the things the city required, the Montrose Collection, to do was convert to ADA compliant bathrooms. So, the bathrooms are much, much larger than ones that were in the restaurant before. The old ones were taken out and a bar was put into that area. Now, the city says you got to put a partitional, my clients can put a partitional open, they'll move their office in there. But now, as the city now requiring them to upgrade the bathrooms on a pre-existing space, there's the issue. The city going to say, "No, you can put the old non-compliant bathrooms back in." Are they going to say, "No, you have to now comply with the new code because you used this space and we decided you couldn't use it anymore for a restaurant because you don't have the required parking?" And the second issue, which, which Mr. Garcia hints at, and you asked a question about, Councilman, was how you can extinguish a non-conforming use. A non-conforming use can be extinguished through expansion. It can be extinguished through abandonment or waiver or deliberate act. This restaurant has been, or a restaurant has been in existence since 1966. It makes no difference whether or not the ownership of the restaurant has changed, the type of the restaurant has changed, the style of the restaurant has changed. As long as there's been a continuously operating restaurant in this space since 66, its use is grandfathered, and that's what the issue is. If you take away the additional space because there's not enough parking for that, you're going back and saying, "Well, can't really use this extra 1,200 square feet." You're back to where you were before. I don't think there's any issue, but that space has been concurrent and consistent, and there's no evidence, in fact, not only is there no evidence, that space has never not been used as a restaurant continuously since 66, and it goes straight back into the grandfather provisions and allows them to operate a banquet hall there. I don't know how it can be any other way. They may have to, you, you may want to think about what, what the practical effect of a vote in favor of this revocation is going to do. It may return my clients to business where they get to put in non-compliant bathrooms and go run banquets all day. You know, at the moment, what they're doing is running both a restaurant with occasional banquets, which means less than five, I'm sorry, less than four a week. They run less than four banquets a week. It's usually one or two, in fact, which is what they said they were going to do and what they've always done.
Your time is up.
Okay, thank you. Any questions?
Any questions? Okay, I'm going to close the public hearing. Hear from the council. Would either of you like to, any comments?
No comment. I have no, no further comments.
For myself, I have not heard anything that convinces me to overturn the decision of the planning commission. So, I would entertain a motion. Mr. Howard.
As Madam Mayor, members of the council, prior to that, just so the record is complete, we should note that the following documents will be considered as part of the record. One is a letter referred to by Mr. Toboni that he did send in dated September 22nd, 2009, consisting of two pages. In addition, the staff report, all exhibits, maps, memorandas, previous findings, and files that were incorporated by reference will be part of and included in the record in this matter.
Will I entertain a motion?
Move 9A1.
And I will second it.
Hey, can we have a roll call, please?
Councilmembers, Drayman?
Yes.
Jarian?
Mayor Quintero. Councilmember Weaver.
Aye.
Mayor Protem, Friedman.
Yes.
And again, so the, the record, the public understands, that was a motion that will continue the matter to prepare findings in support of the approving the revocation. Those findings will be returned to you October 13th, 2009, two weeks from tonight.
Thank you. Mr. City Clerk, what's next on the agenda?
Madam Mayor Protem, we now return to oral communication where discussion is limited to items not a part of this agenda. Each speaker is allowed five minutes. Council may question or respond to a speaker, but there will be no debate or decision. And City Manager Mayor, for the matter, to the appropriate department for investigation and report.
Thank you. I have two cards. First, Richard Malouf. You'll please state your name for the record.
Good evening. My name is Richard Malouf. I am the store manager of Corden's Ranch Market located on 2931 Honolulu Avenue. I'd like to address the issue about Trader Joe's coming in. Now, we're a conventional grocery store, supermarket, independent grocery store, which carries a full line of conventional groceries and international foods. Full-scale meat department, full-service, self-service, produce, deli, floral, bakery, and non-food items. And I was, I would like to question, question the council how they could approve a Trader Joe's coming into the area when already the area is a secluded area and is a very challenging area at that. Our store has gone bankrupt prior to us taking over nine years ago, and we have done a lot of changes that cater to our neighborhood, and it's been changing over the years. So, we did a lot of changes, listened to our customers, provided the, the great customer service and the quality that they expect. And now I see like Trader Joe's coming in so close to Montrose where you're advertising a chain store coming in over there. They have already the, the following. They have 300 stores where they do advertising, and it's for those stores. Us as an independent, it's very hard to do that kind of advertising that they do as aggressive and that kind of budget. We send out 30,000 circulars per week to get people to our area. We're not on Foothill Boulevard where we have all the traffic. If we had that, you know, I welcome the competition. I support competition. But having a store that close to Montrose Shopping Park over there, you already have the, you know, the mystique over there attracting the customers, and now you're going to put a Trader Joe's to attract them even further. And I find that, you know, I would like support for our end more west of the Montrose Shopping Park, knowing that we've been there, you know, not as Corden's Ranch, but we've been there over 40 years. As Corden's Ranch, we've been there nine years now. So, I like to, you know, question, and I've heard Mr. Drayman question, you know, state that he didn't want any chain stores in the, in the area, and question the traffic, and I know that we have a fire department right across the street. I question the emergency response times with the, the traffic impeding, you know, the response times, and also, there's two lanes on both sides that convert into one lane at that point. You know, already going through Montrose is, is a very hectic process, and now we have, you're going to bring in a Trader Joe's on that avenue. So the aspect of bringing them in on the traffic aspect, and also as bringing in a chain store in that location are my concerns.
All right. Thank you, Mr. Malouf. We make comments, if any, at the end of the oral communications portion.
Okay. Thank you very much.
My last card is Mike Mohill.
Evening, Mayor Protem, and Councilman, say it right, Mike Mohill. Mr. Weaver, this happens, I happen to know John Kraft. I often sometimes, actually about six months ago, I met him at a Vanguardian meeting with Barry Allen, and he does exist, and he is that heir of the Kraft family. What a coincidence. Also mentioned this afternoon about closed session, knowing about what was going on previous session with Mona. You know what was going on there, sir, you were part of it. Okay, now, the reason I'm coming up here now, I want to talk about the claims against the city. I spent several hours in the city clerk's office going through the files from April through August of this year. I came up with a grand total of $1,286,753,000 in claims against the city. This is the tab. The categories were sidewalk repairs, trip and fall, sounds familiar? Mr. Zer. Claims this year are $637,073. Claims for the trash trucks, the union trash collectors, I believe, they don't give a darn. There was 15 claims totaling $58,000. Trees, trees falling on cars and trucks and whatever. 15 claims, $33,472. Claims against the GWP, $16,457, seven claims. Claims against city vehicles, two claims totaling $57,000. The police department, 11 claims totaling $6,839. There was a couple here that had false arrests, I don't have a number because they don't have a number there. Also, there was one violation of First and Fourteenth Amendment tort claim. I'm sure the city attorney knows about this. Street maintenance, two claims, $5,500. Miscellaneous, I couldn't figure where to put these and what kind of a category. This would be vehicle damage, this would be split lot claims, per drainage claims, property contract claims. Oh, DGAM Construction Company, you know, the building next door, a claim for $464,000 against the city. Have another claim that says failure to maintain repaired design in dangerous conditions, personal injury, unknown is the claim amount. So the hard numbers I have, dear gentleman and lady, is $1,200,000. I asked the question, what kind of supervision have we given the city staff people and the employees? This is a lot of money. This is, how many policemen can we hire? Or a soccer field, maybe? Or more money to repair Rock Haven, or a swimming pool for Mr. Najarian? It goes on and on. What are we doing in the different departments to reduce this claim? Do we keep a record of what was happening this year versus last year? Who reports to these people? This is a lot of money that's taken out of my wallet and the public. It irks me about this number of trip and falls, and branches falling down, doesn't the street department do their, I don't know, the street department, but whoever takes care of the cutting the trees, okay? So I've left a copy here for each one of them already, if you would please put this for a file for anybody who wants to have a record of this. And I have one, two, three extra copies, four copies actually, for anybody else that just happened to have a copy here. My concern is $1,286,000. To be honest, there could be some, you know, frivolous claims. That happens. I'm not saying it doesn't happen, okay? But over $2 million, please, I'm going to have a heart attack. Maybe I can retire into the claims department and give up my social security check. I work for the city. Thank you.
Okay, that's my last card. Mr. Weaver.
Well, according to Vanguard, John Kraft is the legislative liaison that helps get Vanguard out each week, so I'm sure. You know, and since Barry's your good friend, he ought to know John Kraft easily. Says he goes down to Foxy's with you. The other boy, I think $1 million in claims, I'd sure like to see the claims in the city of Los Angeles for all those water main breaks that they're having. There would be hundreds of millions of dollars of claims put down, just counting that. Oh, yes, that's right, we only care about Glendale, California, USA. We're different. We have to be perfect. No claims, no nothing, we're superhuman in this city. Get real, Mr. Mohill, Mr. Barry Allen, who you kept, you keep prepping, Mr. Mohill, to come in here. Get real, we're a typical American city, and we're run much better than 99% of the cities around here, in the state of California, maybe United States. So, you know, trying to make us the same. Go to LA, or go to one of the other cities and look at their claims. Compare statistics on claims, then come back and tell us that we're way out of whack. Thank you.
Mr. Drayman.
I want to address a couple of things from the gentleman from Corden's Ranch Market, where by the way, as I've mentioned publicly, I have been a customer for many years, and will continue to be. I was a customer there before it was Corden's Ranch Market, when it was Sparky's Apple Market. And we were customers as a family when it was Phil's Market and Country Cousin Market and all the other incarnations. I just want to clarify a couple of things. One is that, one of the unique things about sitting up here is you have people come forward to tell you what you said, and in some cases it's true, and in some cases it's inaccurate. I have never sat here or anywhere else and said we should have no chains in Montrose. Montrose has always had chains, whether it's Western Auto Parts, Winchell's Donuts, Pizza Houses, banks, and more recently, and Hardy Shoes, and J.C. Penney's as an example, and another local grocery chain, The Shopping Bag, which had a location in Tahunga, La Prisana, Montrose, and La Cañada. And that is within the 40 years that the location that the gentleman was speaking about was there. What I have said is that I have a concern, as most residents in the area do, and most merchants frankly in the area do, about what kind of national chains come in and how they operate. The ones that seem to fit best are, if they are national retailers or regional retailers, ones that operate with a business model that is akin to a local business. In other words, they're very invested in the local community, they hire locally, so they employ people, and those that have a very strong local presence rather than a corporate presence, and who give back to the community. Those are the kinds of businesses that work well. Currently, other than the banks, there's Coffee Bean and Tea Leaf, there's also Color Me Mine. There are a number of chains, there always have been, there likely always will be. The presence of Trader Joe's being in the Montrose Shopping Park won't change my habits of shopping at Corden's, and I doubt it will change others. I read in the paper that the local Vons Market is planning an expansion, and I'm wondering whether that also concerns Corden's Ranch Market, because they are increasing their produce section, their bakery section, according to the article in the paper, and I think their deli section too, is what the article said. Particularly with regard to produce and bakery, this is for me a large area for Corden's. Those are some of the things that I think they excel in. In any case, it is a different, a different kind of operation. And so now, where did it come from? Where did the notion come from? I'll just restate again, that didn't come from out of the blue, it came from my neighbors, your neighbors, our collective neighbors in the larger Montrose, Prisana Valley area, who when asked what kind of retailer they would like to see as an anchor at the west end of the shopping park business improvement district, continued to say Trader Joe's, Trader Joe's, Trader Joe's, Trader Joe's. You can't help what they wanted, and neither can I. The, this came in the form of public outreach that was conducted in the form of surveys, face-to-face, mail-in, over the internet, and public outreach with local merchants in the area, and with, more importantly, the residents of the area, not one, but two, public outreach sessions where people came and expressed their interests. So that's where the notion came from. And I don't know whether, maybe that's where the, where the discussion should lie for Corden's Ranch Market, your core of customers, and I know many people in the area who shop at Corden's Ranch Market, just like me. But I also will tell you that if there's a Trader Joe's that's locally there, I'll also shop there. I also shop at Vons, I also shop at Ralph's, so, thank you, Mr. Mayor. Madam Mayor, pardon me.
Thank you. The only thing I have to add to that is that one thing that Mr. Malouf stated was that the Trader Joe's would bring more traffic, and that's certainly true, and it's my hope, and I'm not clairvoyant, but it's my hope that some of that traffic also finds its way to your store, as the Trader Joe's will inevitably attract people who maybe don't typically go to that area for groceries. Trader Joe's does not carry everything, they're not a full-service grocery store, in my opinion, and I would hope that some of the people who decide to do some shopping there will also find their way into your store, maybe for the first time. So it's my hope that it helps to not only bring people from the shopping park further west, but further west to include your business. And I think that that's the experience that stores that are near, even grocery stores that are near some of the other Trader Joe's locations have found. With that, what's next on the agenda, please?
Madam Mayor and Council, if there's any new business.
I have new business.
Okay.
Like to move that the city attorney be and hereby is authorized to enter into retainer agreement with the law firm of Miller and Van Eaton, PLLP, to serve as Federal Communications Commission, FCC, counsel in the representation of the interests of the city in Glendale in connection with the matter of the CTIA petition for declaratory ruling, FCC Docket Retainer agreement shall in addition to other provisions contain a fee cap and estimated budget for the handling of said matter. By entering into said retainer agreement with Miller and Van Eaton, PLLP, the city of Glendale will be joining forces with a coalition of other communities nationwide to oppose the wireless carrier industry's proposal that the FCC declare new limitations on local zoning authorities as they affect cell tower siting, and advocate for the need to retain local control over issues which Congress has granted, and which if limited, could potentially have significant impacts on the quality of life for local residents.
Thank you, and as this is an issue that's of a great concern to many of our residents, Mr. Howard, could you please just expand a little bit on that and maybe try to tell in plain English what it is the city is trying to accomplish?
As a matter of members of the council, in plain English, what the council is doing by this motion, should you adopt it, is to retain legal counsel to advance the interests of this community, along with other communities in the United States, before the Federal Communications Commission. The wireless carrier industry has been seeking for some time through a number of means, this is not the first nor is the last, attempt to try to remove or limit our local authority over the siting of wireless antenna in any number of ways of trying to reduce our authority to protect and to examine, in particular, the siting of these antennas and the impacts that they may have. It is, we felt it appropriate to bring before you the need to retain specialized counsel to work with not only Glendale but other cities in trying to advocate before the FCC the need to retain our ability to properly examine these applications for wireless antenna facilities, and regulate them accordingly so that the interests of our community, particularly those individuals in residential zones, and those in, and our public rights of way as well, are protected.
So just to distill it even further, basically, the wireless industry is trying more and more and more aggressively to undermine local zoning codes, to assert that they have a right to put their wireless equipment pretty much wherever they want to without city oversight, and we are joining with other cities in an attempt to bring a lawsuit and to advocate in the federal level for our right as a city to enforce our own zoning regulations and to be sure that this, that our residents are well-served and that these cellular, that the cellular equipment is properly placed and safe. So that's basically what we're doing.
Madam Mayor, exactly with one minor exception, that is, this firm is not retained to actually bring a lawsuit, it's really to advocate the city's position before the Federal Communications Commission so that we can hopefully convince the FCC that local control needs to be retained so that whether it's the city council, the planning department, or some other department within the city, has the ability to review these antennas, look at their impacts, hear from the community, and ultimately make a decision if it's the right place and the right thing to allow.
And for the record, I would also be in favor of using our lobbyists at the state and the federal level to advocate that position.
Need a second.
On the motion.
Second.
Okay, can we have a roll call, please?
Councilmembers Drayman.
Yes.
Najarian. Mayor Quintero. Weaver.
Aye.
Mayor Protem Friedman.
Yes.
And with that, I'll entertain a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Second.
You're adjourned.